Mr. Chairman, there are two discussion items on the county attorney's report. The first discussion item two dash one is the recommendation concerning legal representation of Commissioner Douglas Underhill. There is an A and a B.
No, we have a ton of speakers, Madam Counsel.
Okay.
Oh, Tom. Tracy Adams.
Good afternoon. I'm here not in support of this, simply because if you all determine that this act was during the performance of his duties as a commissioner, then you also have to consider the fact that this was done on social media where he has many, many constituents blocked, which is, my understanding, a violation of the sunshine laws and statutes. Also, we're paying other legal fees that he is supporting. Beach access number four, he supports the condos lawsuit so we can't open our beach. I think that's funding we've already provided. And finally, because I don't make long speeches, Larry Downs was not lying. If you go to Sundown, beautiful Perdido Key, what he read is on this website. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker will be Michael McCormick.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I would like to take you back to May 9th, when there was a discussion concerning the, at the time, technology social media policy. On May 9th, Commissioner Burgash made this statement, "We have the right to freedom of speech, all of us, as U.S. citizens, but we also have the responsibility to face the consequences for anything we say." I agree. Also, in speaking for maintaining First Amendment rights, he made this statement, "Respect us as individuals with our individual rights, knowing full well we have the responsibility for what we say in any medium that we say it." Immediately following that, Commissioner Underhill made this statement, "I agree 100% with everything Commissioner Burgash said." He also added, "This board does not have the authority to dictate amongst ourselves how we do this, and also, I do not acknowledge this board's ability to dictate how and with whom I contact." Commissioner Bender, at that point, made a statement to Jeff along the lines of, "I'm not going to defend your First Amendment rights. You have the right to say what you want, but you have the right to stay up for it." Commissioner Berry also said that while he didn't have a problem with the use of technology by the members on the dais, he did say, "The use of social media and the tenor of the comments does have a negative effect on me," and he is absolutely correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Bearden.
Hi, y'all, me again. I'm not going to talk against Doug Underhill. I'm going to talk about the issue of what is before this board. And what's before this board is whether or not the board pays for the actions of its members when they are acting outside of board purview. I know it seems nice to be able to let's back our fellows because we want them to back us, but the reality is, you don't back somebody when they're doing wrong. If any of you do something outside the purview of this office, in whatever narcissistic method or whatever you do, because you get angry about something, as earlier when Commissioner Underhill basically said that Larry was stupid when he made the comment about the Constitution, not knowing it, and then in his own words said, "Tourism will thrive without Visit Florida. It's a private sector's job on the Internet." This is just actions taken to strike back at somebody you disagree with. That's not your job. It's not my job. I try not to attack people. I try to deal with logic and cut emotion out of it. As a mental health therapist for years with combat vets, that was one of the important things I had to deal with, is reducing the emotion and getting people back to talking about logic and about lifestyles and how we can affect that and move forward. One of the things we move forward with is taking ownership. It's like the talk I gave a little earlier today about responsibility. You can do anything you want in life, as long as you're responsible for your actions. It's not somebody else's responsibility to handle the results of those actions. I ask you to remember that down the road, other things may come up that cost the taxpayers' money and funding, and it's not our job to handle the actions of people outside the purview of your job.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker will be Mr. Kevin Wade.
Kevin Wade, 413 Southeast Boblets, again. Take us all back to muscle memory if we need to. Flapping the suck, running social media in a way that is a war on citizens, driving campaigns, hiding underneath the admin. I love the email of yours where Nextdoor sends you the request to boot someone from the forum that you reported to Nextdoor, so you would be covered as an admin, so that Nextdoor, the social media system, would just go ahead and do it. That's pretty. Thought social media was not one of these things that was part of the county culture in a way where you drive the citizens with those channels, and your war on the citizens in this way needs to stop. And muscle memory? Pay for this one? Probably going to be paying for a lot more, but, you know, it gets more and more expensive.
Thank you, Tim Smith.
Tim Smith, 310 West Sunset. And I just want to echo what my other constituents have said back here. I also feel that Mr. Underhill's request for these legal fees to be covered by the people of Escambia County is unjustified. His careless statements were not about the district that he represents at the time. He was talking about another district. When he steps out of this district, this business has nothing to do with the people that he represents, and I don't feel that we should be the ones that cover his mistakes and his carelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Crummel.
Okay, Diane Crummel, there is a word called enabler. Enabler, that is to allow bad behavior to continue. I believe that if the commissioners pay for Commissioner Underhill's legal fee, that you will become an enabler. What makes you think for one second that you pay his fees, that gives him carte blanche in the future to go off the wire again, say whatever he wants? Guess what? Here comes another lawsuit, and another lawsuit, and another lawsuit, and another lawsuit. So by you allowing or agreeing to pay his legal fees, gives him an open, you know, he's got an open past, go and say and do whatever he wants with no consequences. And I believe that the taxpayers, I'm speaking for my friends, for other people too, a lot of people here today, that we don't believe that the taxpayers, our taxpayer dollars, should be footing his legal bill. And then he has the arrogance and the audacity to ask to have the limit raised, so he can, you know, from $350 an hour to whatever you are asking Commissioner Underhill. I just find this truly unbelievable. So I'm asking you guys not to become enablers, to not pay his legal fees, to stop this, and, you know, and you can do it right now. We've heard it before. When's the next, who's going to come up next? Oh, wow, Underhill. Okay, well, I got away with that. I can pay my fees. I'm just going to keep on saying whatever I want. I'm going to show them. Enough is enough.
Ron Hales.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, fellow commissioners. First of all, I just want to say, I'm embarrassed for all of you that the ethics around this decision that you're having to make is one-on-one to me. You know, I've been a therapist, I've been a pastor, I've been many things in life, but hopefully I've never been an embarrassment to any profession that I've held. I ask you to hold the bar high. I ask you to not support paying Commissioner Underhill's legal fees. I'm asking you not to continue to make the citizens of Escambia County a victim. It is time to raise the bar of ethics and allow you all to be proud of who you serve with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hales. Our next speaker, Margaret Houseletter.
Do we have two minutes, three minutes? What, please? Oh, two minutes. I was asking the time. Have you started it yet? Oh, great. May I get a recount since I was asking?
Well, maybe if you'd start, you would have the time. You reset it for two minutes, so let's go.
Thank you. Your policy, which is in your backup here, which is the board policy for legal representation, says the purpose is for commissioners that they should be entitled to assurance they will not be encumbered by legal expenses predicated on their official acts. Attorney's fees in no event shall exceed $250 per hour. That's in your current policy, unless a higher amount by this board is due to extraordinary circumstances. It also says, "Civil action for defamatory material on social media," or of this libel. Well, it doesn't say this, sorry. But this is a civil action for defamatory material on a social media and libel by Commissioner Underhill. Also, we're not just talking about the more than $350 an hour he wants to pay an attorney. There's a possibility for travel expenses, all the court costs, and they're asking for a jury trial. I presume that's a little more expensive, too. And the person bringing this suit against him is saying he wants damages in excess of $15,000. So what if he gets his damages awarded? Does that mean we have to pay not only all his legal fees and all of that, but the damages that he's been required to pay? Did, I would like to ask, did Commissioner Underhill fulfill the requirements of this policy, which was to present in writing within 10 days of his knowledge of a relevant action or within 10 days of retaining an attorney for the request of having his bills reimbursed? May I get an answer whether he fulfilled his requirements under this policy to apply for this reimbursement?
That would be a legal question.
Yes, it is.
First of all, it's not a reimbursement.
All right.
This is a prospective retention of an attorney. There are no legal bills that I'm aware of that have incurred to date, and yes, the commissioner did make at least my office aware as soon as he was served with the lawsuit.
Was it in writing, and did it meet all the conditions of this policy?
I thought it was sufficient to trigger the responsibility of me to get it to the board.
I'd like to see a copy of it, if I may. Thank you.
Melissa Pino.
Thank you, Chairman May, Melissa Pino, 413 Southeast Boblets. Doug, I bet you wish you hadn't have killed that road widening project your first day in office, huh? And if you think I haven't seen the materials online for White Island, you're even more nuts than I thought you were yesterday. I can tell you what that project says and every one of your projects say. Little bit of this, little bit of that. We'll see how it turns out in the end, and they never go to plan. And this is germane to what we're talking about, because you are a completely faithless individual. And if anyone thinks that this is the last time this is going to happen, consider these sorts of remarks. Mel is devolving and will collapse soon. I'm still standing, Doug. Year and a half. I got more in the tank, too. She has spun a web of tall tales on nearly everything I am working on, but truth and time unravels lies. Melissa Pino, holy cow, trying to have a conversation with a crazy person is like trying to juggle jellyfish while dancing barefoot in a room full of mousetraps, and you're on thin ice at the same time. You have a woman who is clearly exhibiting classic signs of mental defect, who was used by Commissioner Burgash to try to sabotage a campaign. In doing so, he fed her hysteria in her mind that is expanding and unlikely to stop before As her behavior gets worse, fewer people listen to her. Those that created the monster distance themselves, causing her to further escalate her activities to stay relevant. She now believes the work she is doing is deadly serious. That is an unfortunate escalation, because it is just a short matter of time until she is able to justify violence. And the next time you say anything about my husband while he's on business trips, we got a whole pack of D.C. lawyers that'll be coming for you.
Your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up. Larry Downs Jr.
I've got a presentation before my time starts, please. I would like some help with this. I've got these here that's got to be handed to y'all. I'm sorry, I hadn't planned on presenting that, because I didn't, I wasn't absolutely positive. Is that it? Yeah. Got the picture? You got the other one? That's all right. That's fine. All right. The reason why I bring this up, I'm Larry Downs Jr. Reason why I bring this up is because earlier Douglas said that I didn't understand the Constitution, somewhat to the effect that I'm basically stupid. You know, that's what he insinuates. Y'all get it? And that tourism, it's not, you know, anybody can have an opinion. I believe it's unlimited government, whether it's local, state, or federal. It's unlimited. That's what I said up here, word for word. I said exactly what Douglas said online in February. He says February 24th, "He shares in Visit Florida subsidies." Yeah, right. I'll eat this column if this happens.
Mr. Chairman, is this germane to the matter before us?
It is. It is, because it shows what he does online.
You have to, you have to make sure that it remains.
Yep. Government should stop trying to sell Florida and focus on building, cleaning, and maintaining it. That's our job. Then he comments right below it, and he says, from Commissioner Doug Underhill. Now, the first one was, he comments he mixes the two, his private and his personal. It is the private sector's job, and they do it well. Tourism will thrive without Visit Florida. Now, tourism's tourism, and he just said exactly what I said up here. It's the private sector's business. And then he tells everybody in this room, making me look like a fool or trying to, you got it right here. It's right here, his words. Now, this is the nonsense that he's being sued over, and there's going to be more, "I am begging y'all not to pay his attorney fees. He ran his suck. He needs to pull it out of his wallet and cover it." This is wrong. I mean, there's other people lining up to do this. You know, Eager Beaver. He said some stuff about Eager Beaver. You know, they're not super poor people. Y'all going to pay for him, too? You know, for that lawsuit when that comes? No. He said himself.
You're going to finish up, sir.
All right, just one thing. To Scott Miller, he says, "Now I know you and Larry Newsom were going to make a ton of money with the dump, run all them black folks off their land." He does the same thing out at Perdido Key, talking about white trash.
Right, you're going to be in, sir.
This is not under the purview of being a commissioner.
Commissioner Underhill.
I think I'll probably need to start with my disclosure. Is that right? The abstention? I, Douglas B. Underhill, hereby disclose that on July 18, 2019, a measure came before my agency, which in erred to my special private gain or loss. The measure before my agency and the nature of my conflicting interest in the measure is as follows. County attorneys report car two dash one, recommendation concerning legal representation of myself, Doug Underhill, asking the Board of County Commissioners to retain attorney Ed Fleming and the McDonald Fleming Law Firm for representation in a defamation lawsuit brought in a civil court case number 2019, CA 000931, which creates a conflict of interest pursuant to Florida statute 112 dot 3143, or an appearance of a conflict of interest pursuant to section 286 dot 012 of Florida statutes. I'll sign that and put that on the record. So it is, I mean, for the last year and a half, you know, with the same speakers at every single meeting, customarily, I don't generally respond to them, but certainly it is the same speakers speaking always against whatever it is that's going on with me. And it's fairly noteworthy that it is only those speakers, with the exception of Ron, first time that he's been here, but otherwise, it's all the same speakers. Number of things have been said here that when I'm talking on social media, that I block people. On the social media page, 100% of everything that I put on social media is a matter of public record if it pertains to county issues. My county site, Commissioner Doug Underhill, is the only, is the one that I speak with and in this case spoke with. I block no one on there. No one is allowed to make a comment. I do not read any comments that are put on there. They show up as hidden comments. Therefore, if other people do block you, as many of these people are blocked by many, many citizens in the county, then they are not able to see those. Speaker said that we need to be held accountable for our actions, and that those, you know, if those actions, and that a number of speakers said that these are outside the purview of my office. I'm going to go through what I said, and I'm going to explain why those things, I believe, are within the purview of my office. I think that pretty much covers that. Oh, there's some discussion about the amounts, the maximum. It's not 350 or more. The maximum is 350, of course, with all these cases, as you guys know. Staff members who are working on the project will bill at a much lower rate. That's Mr. Fleming's actual rate himself. So the real question then becomes, and it's not, it's surprising, actually, it's not about Doug Underhill. It's not about any of those issues. I don't, whichever road she's talking about or any of those other things. It's not about the perpetual hatred of this small group of people. This really, this discussion is about Wedgwood. You each have in your inboxes an email from the county attorney that talked about the timeline. On May 28th, her office contacted Scott Miller's attorney in order to schedule his deposition to try to find out where all the money went from that was made in the Rolling Hills dump. Now, this is the first time that we have actually started going after the individuals who made the decisions that polluted Wedgwood. This is not new to any of you or anybody else who spends any time in this room, because for the last six to eight months, I've been asking, why aren't we trying to see if they in fact pierced the corporate veil? Just, we actually have no records of what went into Wedgwood, or into Rolling Hills. There is no record of how much material was delivered into Rolling Hills. There is no record of exactly what's in it. No records appear to have been kept. So I don't know what the actual mass quantity is of construction debris that went in there. But just on the material that is in violation, that is that that is above the land level, is over a half a million cubic yards of construction debris. Going rate right now is about $500 to dump a 30 cubic yard dumpster. You don't have to do the math to realize that's a lot of money. Now, I'm sure during the time that Wedgwood was in operation, it wasn't $500. It was probably less than that, but that's the kind of thing we really ought to know. What we also know from public records is that, from the depositions that have taken place as this has gone on, is there may be as many as seven mortgages taken out on that business during its time of operation. Some of those mortgages exist between the company and owners of the company. That's a transfer of money. There was an enormous amount of equipment being used in the Rolling Hills dump. Those equipments and those are assets of the company that have value. So for many years, Wedgwood was polluted with the Rolling Hills dump, and a lot of money was made. I mean, it'd be almost impossible to refute the idea that a lot of money was made. So now that it's time to clean it up, the question becomes, where is the money? How can there be no money when so much money was made? It is, I believe, our responsibility of our offices to find out if money was transferred out of the business at a time when the liabilities of its operation were about to be transferred to the people. So for that reason, I do believe that, A, it is absolutely right and proper that we depose Mr. Miller in August, as we are planning on, and that we start getting to the bottom of where the money went and who actually made these decisions that polluted Wedgwood through the Rolling Hills dump. So the discussion then becomes, was it appropriate for me to talk about this outside of this building? And was what I said outside of my responsibilities in this position? One of the speakers said, wasn't even in his district. That's kind of noteworthy, don't you think? You're right, it's not in my district. But the fact that the people of Wedgwood were poisoned because of decisions that were made or not made on this board, and the fact that this actually happened once before over in District 1, and all the money was made, but when it was time to clean up the mess and lock it down, who paid for that? The people did. So the pattern of behavior of allowing this kind of thing to happen, and then allowing the bad actors to walk away with their profits and leave us saddled with the burden, that is a pattern of behavior that I believe it is this board's responsibility to stop, and therefore, it is my responsibility as a commissioner to stop. So that is why I've been making the statements about Rolling Hills that I have been making. And then I think it's important, as we, you know, look at whether or not the statements that I made were in fact appropriate to make as a commissioner. And it doesn't matter whether or not Mel or Larry or anybody else thinks it's appropriate. It really matters whether or not, I mean, because no matter what I say or do in this job, you already heard, I mean, this is our own local indigenous resist movement, and Larry Downs stood at the podium some time ago and basically asked you to vote against everything that I was doing, in spite of the fact that that would be a complete disrespect of the electoral process that we have, by which a majority of the citizens, voting citizens in District 2, chose for me to sit in this chair. So let's look at each of the things that I said that are coming right out of the document for which I am being sued. I believe I am being sued in retaliation for my pushing to ensure that Mr. Miller and anybody else associated with those decisions be held accountable. The things that I said, I referred to him as the mouthpiece of Rolling Hills. He has specifically stood at that podium many times over the years and referred to himself as the spokesperson for Rolling Hills. So unless mouthpiece and spokesperson are not essentially synonyms, then that is clearly a statement of fact. I said that he is well-known to be one of the men who polluted Wedgwood with your Rolling Hills dump. Okay? In order to refute this statement, you would have to deny that, in fact, he was the spokesperson for Rolling Hills during those years, and stood at that podium many times in public record and stated so. Or you would have to refute that Rolling Hills dump polluted Wedgwood. For myself, I think the facts are pretty clear on that, that there is pollution in Wedgwood, and it is a result of the Rolling Hills dump. Went on to say, which now the people are paying to close. It is an absolute verifiable fact, the state of Florida is having to pay the cost well above the bond amount to close this dump. It is also a clear statement of fact that it is costing Escambia County citizens to monitor the H2S, to put out the fires that have taken place there, and now to monitor the water as well, besides just the amount of time that we spend here on this board talking about it. Okay? Now, the next statement is one that is probably going to be fairly contentious. Run all them black folks off their land. Backdoor offers, and I talk about Larry was allowed to resign instead of get fired because he was making backdoor offers to those poor people. he was making backdoor offers to those poor people to buy their homes once the dump had made them sick enough that they could not fight. Gentlemen, that is exactly what I was told by County Administrator Jack Brown when he gave Mr. Newsom the opportunity to resign, that that was the purpose. Now, happy to go ahead and depose Mr. Brown, who has always, to my knowledge, never told a lie that I'm aware of. Happy to put him under oath to address that. Those letters were in fact sent, and other speakers have talked about those letters from the podium. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that outbursts not be allowed.
Please refrain from any outbursts.
I've made a statement about this, about Mr. Miller, that, you know, he, that when he did in fact run for office, he literally got, what, 5% of the votes when he ran? Can't be slanderous because it's true. That's actually a fact. Fact that he helped Gene to lose to a complete nobody, me? I mean, it is a fact that, you know, the Escambia Citizens United, which is this PAC, a political action committee that was attacking me during the campaign and continues to do this work, the voiceover for the advertisement that was run on Fox News, the voiceover for that is Mr. Miller himself. Okay? So those statements, you know, while they may not make Mr. Miller comfortable, they are absolute factual statements. They are not slanderous. And which, I mean, those are matters for the court to decide, which obviously, I'm sure they'll decide very strongly in my favor, as you have heard from your account, or your attorney, that it's actually very, very hard to win a slander case, especially when the things that were said were in fact true. So I present it to you, gentlemen, that the only reason, yeah, I've been talking out against Mr. Miller since before I was a commissioner. Commissioner May went, was a 4-1 vote trying to close down that dump for a long time, or for a short period of time. Stephen Berry came on very soon after that, understanding the ramifications, and it was a 2-3 vote every single time something came up against Rolling Hills. Everything at Rolling Hills changed when I got elected, and it became a 3-2 vote. Actually, it shifted very quickly, of course, when, as wins often do. And we started getting, making movements to closing down Rolling Hills. For over five, or about five years now, I've been very much on the record, trying to figure out how this could have happened in our community, how we could have allowed citizens to get poisoned while people get rich and walk away with the money. But it didn't, didn't raise to the level of being a lawsuit until precisely and exactly one week after your attorney contacted his attorney and said, we're going to depose you and start asking questions about where the money went. So in my opinion, this is retaliatory in nature. I ask that the Board of County Commissioners move to recognize that it is in fact a part of my duties to ask those questions and to stand firm, asking those hard questions, even when pushed back in something so simple as a lawsuit. And I also, so I ask that you, that you fund it proactively, but I will also say that if a court of law finds wrongdoing on my part, then I will immediately reimburse the county for any expenses incurred. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Berry, Bender, and Ben Magash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Underhill, I don't disagree with the vast majority of what you've said, at least that I have personal knowledge of. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the timeline, and honestly, a lot of the content, you know, I concur with many, with many of those things. I disagree in the fact that it's your duty that has brought the lawsuit. We need, the county needs to do everything that we can possibly do. The board has taken every proactive vote that we could as a body to pursue Rolling Hills, to pursue as much recovery of funds that we can. I understand what you're saying about you saying this in retaliation. If the comments that were the narrative of the suit had been made from the dais, or had been made at a town hall meeting that you had staff at, I would be much more open-minded to it. The comments that are the narrative in the lawsuit were made on social media, you and I, I believe, are just gonna disagree perpetually about whether that's your duty to, to interact, especially in a way that could hypothetically be seen as slanderous or as libelous. You know, it's not as if there was just a yes or no question or something. You know, you're saying that's your duty. I disagree with that. And if your comments were made in, in your public capacity, then I would be, I would be open-minded. But given the circumstance, I mean, I'm not gonna support paying for legal representation for comments that are made on social media.
Thank you.
Applause.
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner, certainly, I understand, and you, that you disagree that social media is one of the means, is a, is a public forum in the way that this same room is. I respect your right. I respect where you're at on that.
That's not what I said. We disagree about whether it's a duty. I don't disagree about whether it's a forum. I don't disagree about those things. I can, I mean, please, I can speak for myself. It's not a duty to respond with, with comments about citizens that way. That is not a duty of, it's certainly not a duty of mine, and I don't think it's a duty of any of ours.
Okay. I respect your understanding that it is not your duty to speak in that capacity. I take a different approach, as you well know, and you're right, we're gonna have to disagree on it. It is my duty to say the truth about every issue that comes before me, regardless of where it comes before me, whether it be in this room, at church, at Publix. I am always going to say those things.
Then it's your responsibility to bear the, to bear the outcomes of those actions.
I understand where you're at.
No, I don't think, I don't think you do. When you're, if you're saying it's your right, I'm, okay, that is your right. It's also your responsibility to, to bear out the fruit that comes from those interactions. And if you agreed with that, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
No, no, I, I did not say that I agree with it. I said, I respect that that is your position. So I respect that you're gonna be voting no today. I, I do, I respect it. I respect why you are saying no. The statements that I make in this room, the statements that I make in our private meetings and back, statements that I make at Publix, or at church, or on social media are always going to be exactly the same. It's actually what drives folks nuts about me, is that it pretty much stays, stay right where I tell you I'm gonna stay. So I recognize and, and respect the fact that you do not believe it is a duty to speak in that way, in that place, and for that reason, you'll be voting against me. Thank you.
Commissioner Ben, did you have some? Commissioner Magash?
I've given this one a great deal of consideration. Done a lot of research on it. And because I too am a person that's on social media. But that's where I think the differences end. You know, social media can be rough and tumble. I get attacked all the time. I mean, I agree with Doug in that I think it's an important component of what we do as elected officials in 2019. So, but I believe that's where the distinction's gonna end. Because when you're on social media, and, you know, particularly if you're on your official site, or, I mean, in your personal site, at some point, there will be a demarcation. I'm a county commissioner. I'm a county commissioner. But if I get in my truck, and I drive on the sidewalk and purposely run over a jogger because I'm pissed off at him for some reason, I can't come back here and say, I'm a county commissioner, I need a fence. We all drive vehicles. But I drove my vehicle in a way that was not smart, not safe, and ended up causing a tragedy. So it's, the only issue that I see is there is a nexus. There is a nexus, and you can't ignore that. There is a nexus between what was being discussed and some actual business that is before this committee, and, and, you know, the, the timing of the, of the deposition, and then, you know, the filing of the lawsuit, you know, you can't ignore that. But I, but I get back to this. I mean, I'm a county commissioner. When I'm at Walmart where I shop, I get people to stop me all the time, and we talk business, and I feel like I'm, you know, I'm beholden to the people when they find me where I'm at. At work, they, they come to my office, they find me. You know, they call me, they show up. As a public official, I've had people come to my house when I voted to close Woodham High School, right after I got on the school board, so, and a couple other occasions as well. So we are accessible, and I think that's why it's critically important that when we, when we speak to our constituents, whether it's in person, online, on a blog post, on a comment string, I mean, you're gonna take hits. You're gonna take hits, and people are gonna say things you don't like. And, you know, and I'm typically one that will, you know, I'll give it back a little bit sometimes, too. And, you know, a lot of times, I'll let it roll off my back, I'll ignore it. Sometimes I fight back. But one thing I do is I never, I never make accusations about someone. And I certainly, you know, I've been involved in trading insults with people. In fact, I had one guy that attacked me like five comments in a row. You're a clown, you're a clown, you're a clown, you're a clown. And finally, I, I just, you know, I probably shouldn't have, but I said something back to him. You know, I said, like, you're a clown. I mean, it's stupid. It's just dumb. But nothing that I can get sued over, right? Because no matter who you are, county commissioner, average citizen, you have the right to defend yourself, right? But I think there's a, but that's where the similarities end. If, if I go online and I say something that I can't back up with facts, and, and it makes someone angry, I can be sued. And where I, where I have a problem is, and as we did two years ago with the same issue, there's a two-pronged test. And, and, and I'm just gonna step back, and I know I'm talking a little bit, but I don't see a whole lot of lights on. So I think I'll probably be an important component of this vote. Was the action at issue a part of a person's official duty? That's prong one. Prong two was, was the action at issue done in the public interest? I'm just having a hard time seeing how what, what happened there passes either of those tests. And the issue that I have is, if we vote to do this, we set, in some respects, we set a precedent, but we also set ourselves up. Because any member of that audience out there could immediately, if we made that vote, come after me for an ethics violation. Section 129 talks about paying illegal charges against the Treasury. We talked about this two years ago, so we have to be very careful when we make these decisions. Like Commissioner Berry said, Doug, if we're talking up here and we make a vote about Rolling Hills and he sues you because I didn't like the way Doug advocated for that vote, I'd be right there with you, right? I'd say, let's write you a check, because you deserve immunity for what we do up here. We make decisions that piss people off. I mean, big time. I thought we did, I thought I did when it was on the school board and we were closing schools, believe me. That's nothing compared to some of these decisions that we make up here. But we have to be careful when we make the decision. Because if we make the wrong decision, then we are in violation of law, and we can be removed from office. So it's, it's a really fine line. So like I said two years ago, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that you passed the two-pronged test. I think if I had an attorney general's opinion and a clerk's opinion saying this is a bona fide legitimate charge, I'd be a lot more amenable to, to potentially supporting it. But I haven't seen a memo from our attorney. I'd like a memo. I'd like a written memo. I've spoken with her numerous times, I've asked questions, and I don't have a warm and fuzzy. I, you know, I think at a minimum, the board, for something as important as this, with ramifications that are replete with such a vote, we would deserve a memo with citations and court precedent and all these other things. I'm just, it's, it's gonna be tough for me to support it, Doug, based upon what I said. It's dangerous what we do when we go online. And I know that there are things that I do that could probably subject me to a suit. Even though I, I don't think I ever do anything illegal, I do, I do take my First Amendment right, a free speech, and I use it. And I know sometimes that irritates a lot of people. I know it irritates the cartoonist for the News Journal. He doesn't like it. Too bad for him, because I'm allowed to do parodies. But I've talked a lot. Doug, I can't support it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Magash. Commissioner Underhill, let me say, you're absolutely right in your, in your statements that there was no movement in Rolling Hills till you got on board. And I certainly appreciate it. I think we set a bad precedent the other week, when we went from $250 to $500 an hour to hire an attorney for employees that are being reprimanded by their superior, and we went outside. That was a bad precedent. It wasn't, it's not a lawsuit, it's not criminal, it's administrative, and we hired someone, we hired outside counsel to represent those employees. And I said that statement then to my colleagues, I said, this is a bad precedent, because we have another one coming up with the commissioner. I mean, that was a bad precedent. You know, you know, to get into, you know, the poor black people or whatever, I mean, it's been environmental, racism, environmental injustice in, in Wedgwood for years. It's deplorable. It's embarrassing, and not only to those who sat on the dais, but those who were employed and had any ounce of influence or power set there while people really did die. And it, it is something that will hang over. And so I can say, Doug, in my personal opinion, 99.8% of what you said is absolutely true. What I would say is, I, I think that you can see the tea leaves that, of where the support would fall. This is my opinion. If the courts, I mean, we hadn't got an opinion for our legal. It's not if we're gonna get sued, it's just when we're gonna get sued, when you're in the public eye. That's just the way that it goes. If it's determined that a judge, or there's a legal opinion that says that you are acting in line with your job, you're gonna, you're gonna find my support. I would ask you, in trying to help you, to drop this, pay your legal fees, get an opinion from the judge in the courts, and bring it back. And I'm, and I'll tell you publicly, it may be politically unpopular, if the judge concludes in that, that it was in the line of your duty as a county commissioner, you're gonna have my support, because morally and ethically, you've told the truth, in, in, in my opinion. But I would humbly, I, I think you see where the vote is. I would humbly ask you to, whatever it took for you to litigate that, and to bring it back once you get the results. There is a precedent with Marie Young and Wilson Robertson, once they went through and were validated, that they came back after the fact, and those lawyers held those fees. That's what I would recommend to you today, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I can't call the questions, so I don't have the ability to, you know, to make a motion on this, and, and so I won't. You know, and I recognize, you know, what, what you said, and I appreciate what you said. It's interesting to note that none of, no one up here is willing to say that anything that I said is untrue. So Jeff, going to your number one, your, your two-prong, you know, you, you said if you can't say something, and I may have misunderstood if this was one of your prongs, if you say something that you cannot back up with facts, the statements that I made are absolutely factual. They are absolutely factual. And I'm looking forward to going to court and being able to, and the nice thing about one of these kinds of things is that the discovery process works both ways. So we're gonna have quite a bit of interesting discovery and get a lot of data artifacts entered into the public record about where the money went and who made what decisions when that led to the debacle that we have in Wedgwood. You know, Jeff, your other, you know, is it in the public interest? You know, that, that was one of your prongs, correct? So it just, I don't wanna, yeah, okay, so that was one of the prongs. I mean, and, and the thing is, we're five years into this. And in all honesty, you know, it's so funny, because, it's not funny, it's really disappointing, it's depressing, because we are saying the same thing to the people, to the Laffinah Souls Woods, as, as we were saying back when it was going on. Well, we really can't do anything because, you know, the state's in charge. Well, that's exactly what we said about why we couldn't close it down, because the state was in charge of dumps. We don't even have an ordinance that says you can't have it. But the funny thing is, as soon as we had the will and the courage on this board to shut it down, we shut it down. Now, I realize that, you know, we, you know, certainly sometimes it takes, you know, Jeff, you, you do this all the time, too, and it's funny, because people always think it's us being hotheads, but in fact, it's measured. I know that about you. You decide when to go ahead and fire back, and you're measuring that and thinking it through. Sorry, I just gave up your trade secrets.
No, that's okay.
Okay? There comes a time when we have to be willing to do the things, if, if, I mean, you said, hey, I don't wanna, we shouldn't be doing stuff that's gonna get us sued. Well, I would submit that for the people of Wedgwood, that's exactly what we need to be doing. So, hey, Wedgwood, I got your back, but I got your way back. If it, if it's gonna result in me actually making the Rolling Hills owners angry, well, then, then, you know, I'm not gonna go that far. Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, folks, I am gonna go that far. I regret absolutely nothing that I said. I stand beside every single word of it. I stand behind every word of everything that those speakers put up here and said as well. Well, during my time and my tenure on this board, I am going to ask every possible hard question. I'm going to get down to find out if there's even one private sector dollar among the men who got rich off of Rolling Hills. I am going to find out if we can get that recouped.
But Doug, but Doug, you're conflating two issues. You're conflating the underlying issue of the dump and the way it was closed, and the way, you know, allegedly, some folks walked away with it and their alleged motivations. You're conflating that whole thing with, and, and obviously, you have support. We all support what's going on there with the county. That's why the county's pursuing them. I mean, but it's what you did, the action that you did. I mean, you know, you could find something that's altruistic, that everyone supports, and if one of us goes rogue and, you know, and does something that's, you know, could, could draw a lawsuit, you can't go back to this and say, well, but this is what we wanted to do. Yeah, we wanted to do it, but we gotta follow the process.
Jeff, I appreciate that.
I mean, and so you conflated that a little bit, I just, I mean, I want to correct that. I mean, well, let's just get it all out here in the right way. You know, prong one is, were you acting in your official capacity? You know, so far as I know, this board didn't vote to make you the spokesman to go out and run these people down, that's number one. So I think you're going to have a hard time making that argument. The other part, part two, is, was it something in the public interest? I'm not talking about shutting the dump down, you're conflating that in. I'm talking about the action on social media where you said allegedly, you know, a former administrator conspired with someone to run out black people and steal their property, all that, I don't even know where that came from. You know, that's the action that I'm discussing. Was that action in the public interest? Obviously, closing down the dump and doing it respectfully, responsibly, that's in the public interest, but those statements were not, so don't conflate the two. We all support what's going on at that dump and we're going to get to the bottom of it, and that's why we have an attorney working it. But it's all about that action on social media and the words that were said, because you can say they're facts, what if they're not? What if they're not? I don't believe, Scott Miller believes that those are all facts. I don't believe, he believes that there was a conspiracy and that they wanted to steal property from black people. I mean, that's a lot. I mean, that's a lot that was said there. So you're right, a judge will figure it out, but meanwhile, back at the ranch, the two-pronged test wasn't met, right? You weren't acting in your official capacity when you were running that guy down, and you weren't doing something in the public interest when you were making accusations. So that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, if it was about a vote you made up here that we made, a vote? I'd be like, yeah, bring Ed on board and let's win this thing. But it's two separate issues, so don't conflate them.
And I get it, it is, in my opinion, it is in fact in the public interest to get to the bottom of what happened there. That is, okay, so, and in five years of doing it, of just kind of admiring this problem from every angle, we still don't have anywhere, nowhere close to having those answers. And then, whether it's in my official capacity, if it is not in my, if it is not my job to stand up for those who cannot stand for themselves, it is not my job to ask the hard questions to get to the facts, then I cannot imagine what the purpose of this job is. So for myself, and I get it, we're on separate sides of that, and you refer to this as going rogue, well, I will tell you this, and I'll sell it to Mr. Miller, and I'll tell it to the people of Rolling Hills area and Wedgewood, and I'll tell it to everybody else, I promise you that if actually going after how in the hell things like this happened is going rogue, you can count on me to be rogue for the rest of my time in this office.
Point of order for me, point of clarification, you know, I've heard stealing black folks' land, killing black folks. Candidly, although 99% African-American noted that there are a lot of poor people of color, of Asian descent and Caucasians that were also adversely affected by that gross injustice of neglect that happened in Wedgewood. So, I mean, when we refer to it, to one specific group of people, I think that's really casting prejudgment. It's what we talked about today in our shade meeting, it's those who did not have the political clout or the ability to convince their government to do what they needed it to do. And quite frankly, I'm glad we're having this conversation, if nothing else. I hope that the passion and the commitment to the people of Wedgewood will remain as we move forward in doing something from Wedgewood, because Commissioner Underhill is absolutely correct. I mean, it's been years of neglecting, I mean, it's shameful of what's happened in Wedgewood. It's shameful of how those people live in, and God bless, people have died. I mean, I can tell you, the reason you see yellow shirts, because they go on the crystal clean Pensacola Beach and breathing good air. The reason you don't see orange shirts, because they died, because they breathed all of that foolishness. And, you know, that is a travesty, and it's shameful for this community. I mean, quite frankly, it's a shameful day that happened, and quite frankly, many people who served on this board were not here, but many people who were in leadership still remain. And so they should think long and hard when they sleep tonight about what happened to those people. With that being said, we don't, that dies for the lack of a second.
There was no motion. No motion.
It wasn't even a motion, yeah.
Commissioner Underhill has abstained?
Right, he's abstaining, and so we've given instructions to Doug what to do, unless you have an opinion, Madam Counsel.
No action.
I'm sure, I mean, if it's a lawsuit, the judge will make a determining factor, and if the determining factor was, if it was in line with the commissioner's duty, I will be supporting that. If not, we'll see where it goes.
The second, should I move on?